Okay, all right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to our special meeting, Acheson County Commission's special meeting on Friday, February 2nd. I'm sorry, the agenda that's on there shows February 3rd of 2022 at 9:00 AM. We were starting today at 10:00 AM and we just had some technical difficulties, so I'm calling the meeting's order right now, and if you please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, new business item. Joe Snyder, Rowan Bridge, gave pepper thorn on a Rowan Bridge discussion. Before we get started on the discussion, there is one thing that we neglected to do at our Tuesday meeting, and I wanted to bring that up. When we had the opening of the bid for First Option Bank, I would like to make a motion to allow Joe Snyder to sign documents on behalf of Acheson County relating to the lease purchase documents from our Tuesday, January 30th, 2024 meeting, where First Option Bank was a successful bidder.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass is three to zero. You're good to go with authority on that. Sorry, we missed this.
Me too.
Okay, so, yep, guys are up.
Okay, Dave, you want to present?
Sure. I assume you have the standards in front of you. So this is intended to be a turkey document for new roads and new streets that are either being opened, constructed, somehow turned over to the county, not necessarily intended to be a document that takes ambiguous roadways in the rural part of the county and categorizes them, names them, anything of that nature. A lot of that is done via amalgamation of laws, statutes, you know, dating back to, it seems, perhaps every 30 years, the required right of way changes as vehicles and roads got wider, things of that nature, so. So this is everything kind of modern that's being built, roads and subdivisions, residential developments, entrances off of roadways, et cetera. So the first part is the procedure for plans submitted, so essentially, the developer, the township, the entity that is wanting to improve, construct a roadway, will go hire an engineer to develop a set of plans, those plans will be submitted to the Rowan Bridge Department. Then this, this part kind of gives just a procedure for how that's submitted, time review, et cetera. The second section, we put in a, a section for the engineer's responsibility during construction. Given there's not necessarily a planning and zoning permitting department, that there will be someone that oversees the construction of these roads and then gives a, a statement or report at the end that says these meet our standards and specifications, et cetera.
Dave, can I ask a quick question? So if this would include if there was a section line and somebody was wanting to build a house and that road needed to be upgraded, this would be the procedure for, for that road also?
Precisely, yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that that covers, even if it would be like what they consider a driveway or whatever, if they wanted to bring it up to standard, this policy is what they would have to do if adopted by you guys to bring it up to standard.
Where, it, it's meant to take more of a minimum maintenance road and then, okay, what is our standard for, for making this accessible for emergency vehicles? That's kind of the differentiation. We're going to allow an address at the end of it, that we'll need some sort of servicing, some sort of maintenance, minimum maintenance is kind of a different, different animal.
Go ahead, basically.
So if there's an address at the end of it, this is the standard?
Not necessarily.
Because I feel like that will be misunderstood by people of like their driveway, there's, like, they don't have to bring anything up to county specifications on private property.
No, no, this is, this is only for, and there's a whole set of laws for opening, they call it opening a road. For, you know, when a road is opened in Kansas. So, but you, you also have numerous township roads and things like that, that, that just, you know, you want to upgrade or, or whatnot, so this kind of gives you a sequential, not necessarily, the, the county, this isn't for the county itself, this is for other entities wanting to upgrade roads that the county will either inherit or maintain.
Okay, thank you, sir.
The, the county has, you know, you'll have your own authority, we were talking about Ottawa. You know, we're going to look at the budget, we're going to look at what can be done, you know, we're going to start with the standard, you know, but the, the county, you're, we're going to look at those on a case by case engineered basis, you know, this is more for your subdivisions, townships.
Yeah, got it, thank you.
How would you prefer us, do you, do you want to do the whole thing and then have us ask questions, or do you want to do it as we go?
No, let's, let's ask questions as we go.
Okay.
Like, kind of keep this as just a guide, but, yeah, my, my hope would be to ask questions as we go.
Okay, sometimes presentations, you know, they, they want to present and then take notes and then ask.
Where I'm going to slow down is the parts that, that, where we start talking about, there's going to be bonds and things like that required, but that, that'll, I know there'll be monies associated with that, so that's the part we'll, we'll really want to dive into. The next part is the design criteria and standards, and this is, we're kind of gets engineering and wordy, but we've, one of the roads we're going to have is a low volume road, and that's a road with under, less than 400 cars per day. There's a, there's a different design criteria for a low volume road versus a street or road. So we've kind of spelled out those two different design criteria. They're both what are called Ashtoe Design Policies, the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials. That, that's, that's the basis of the, of the design criteria for the standards. Yeah, we'll, we'll kind of get, you know, into what the roads look like in a, in this a little bit. Along with roads, you, you cannot separate drainage, that, that's, that is just as important as the road is. So what this does is it reverts to a, the Kansas City Metropolitan Chapter, the American Public Works Association, they developed a standard for roadway drainage, et cetera. A lot of it is making sure that you don't adversely affect your neighbors or whatnot, you know, let's say you're redeveloping a road and you, you put in a, an entrance pipe as, as part of your development, now that entrance pipe either inundates your neighbor with too much water or redirects it in such a manner where it's eroding their property or whatnot, so. A lot of it, the, the vast majority of it is to make sure that you're not either disavantaging your neighbor or impacting downstream negatively.
And the county laws, the laws in Kansas tie into all that as well, I don't know the waterway laws.
This, this will only come into effect if you guys, and I'm not sure, I, I, I would have to leave it to the county council, but somehow, you know, a resolution adopts it, and as part of it, what we've done is our design criteria is, it says unless otherwise provided in the street drainage standards, the design criteria shall be, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Yes, so, it really just, what it does is adopts that manual, it's not a law in Kansas, it's not referring to it, but it adopts that manual. And, and I, I appreciate the questions on this because this is one of the larger growing pains when a developer comes in and they want to pave something and then sheet flow their water at the most convenient place for the development, may not be the most convenient place for the neighboring property. So the, they, they, they will, you know, in, it very well, you know, within the next, you know, at some point throughout these criteria, there will be someone in here that says, we don't want to adhere to this.
We, yeah, and we've actually had a situation like this where a gentleman came and asked us about curbing because runoff was going to his, to his home. So i- it's nice to be able to tie for certain examples as we walk through them of like, oh, that'll, that'll fix that, that'll give an answer, you know?
But, and it's going to become legally binding through your resolution, so that, that is how it's going to take, okay, this, this developer put in curb and gutter, looks beautiful, wish we could afford a lot there, we cannot, we have this lot adjacent to him, and now we have all of his water. Somebody please help us, so that this, this will give you, that, this will codify that, but with that resolution, and then by referencing it in the standard.
Perfect.
So.
When we adopt this, well, it's, I can't find it all of a sudden, but anyway, it was a phrase, so it's the most current standard because, but I know whenever you, I'll give you an example, city, the adoption of that code or all the different codes, and they, it's always like this is a 1999 edition for about 2001, we'll do that, you know, so we're always updating. So can this say just the most current recommendations?
Sure.
How does it change? I know they have to tweak things once in a while, I'm sure, but.
I, I think we, should they update that? And I'm going to give you an engineer answer, right now flood runoff is still a growing understanding, you know, we're still growing our understanding of it. So we have amended it specifically for some recent storm drainage design criteria. What I would say, rather than saying, hey, let's, let's just say the most recent, like, it, this needs to be looked at periodically.
Annual.
Yeah, and then also, yeah.
Right, that's why, that's why I was wondering, because we're talking about, we're going to do to somebody else's guideline.
Yes, and, and even, even your electoral standards, I mean, they will say most recent, but, but that city will still on a yearly basis say, okay, we want to exclude most recently is in-house sprinkler systems.
Yeah, we've done that.
So, I mean, you, you, you do adopt it, and this does, it gives the board of county commissioners flexibility. Let's see. Yes.
Change gears.
Yep. No. But yeah, stormwater runoff, it tends to be a litigious issue, so. For that reason, I think rather than saying or most recent, you know, it is spelled out with exactly the design criteria, et cetera. Another, another big part of that is stormwater drainage systems, I think it's to be for more your commercial developers.
Okay.
Section six is traffic studies, and this is more meant to address, it doesn't require them, but it gives the Rowan Bridge Department the authority to require one, should a curve, should an entrance be questionable.
She printed off this one. I had read it last night, what day was that email sent, Joe, do you know? Any idea?
I can get it to you.
It's really weird, I don't know, maybe.
I'll just forward you it really quick so you have it.
I read the whole thing last night, it was riveting.
I appreciate that.
A couple of sandwich chicken radius.
Yeah.
Apologize for the interruption, I just, this is frustrating because I was right on it.
Question for you on this, I was asked yesterday, when we put these policies in place, can we do that without the county being zoned? From my previous discussions with other zoning professionals, I was told the same thing, is Acheson County can accomplish things through resolution without being zoned, so I just want to clarify that, and then like in the traffic study, the verbiage, we may require it to be prepared, should we have somewhere in there at the owner's expense or something so that, because it's came up in the past, like, okay, if we need a traffic study, who's responsible for that? And I don't know if this is the document where we put those type of languages so that it's known that, you know, we may require it, but we're not going to, I don't know. And as an example, that was a question I had after.
And I think, did you not have that in the beginning when you're talking about all the different things that?
It, it did, I'm going to put it specifically into the section as well.
Thank you, I just thought that.
The question I had about, is there, as part of this document, can there be like a checklist? You know, I'm a developer, I show up, you know, what do I need, what applies to me on this development?
Something that they can go through and know.
Yeah, and that design engineer will do that's not necessary, but that was.
This, this document's meant to be that, it's more of a flow chart than a checklist, you know, each one's going to be specific, are we doing, and, and we'll get to, you know, even your subdivisions, what is the density of your subdivision, three acres, you know, over three acres, under three acres? Yes, you know, rather than, see, that is meant to, to some extent to do that.
Okay.
You know, what is your road, we've tried to quantify it with a traffic count, you know, if, if it's in doubt, we, we can do a traffic count and say, okay, here's your standard, you know, from this section to this section, I think I'm answering your question.
If this answers with, with very many people, they go anywhere else, I mean.
So this section seven is kind of unique. And this is an improvement agreement, and this is to say someone wants to improve a section line road and they get halfway into it and the, the project falls through for, you know, whatever reasons halfway into it. But let's, you know, it, it is now adversely affecting others that live along that road. So a part of this improvement agreement is going to require bonds, maintenance bonds, things of that nature, to make sure the project is completed, completed to standard and maintained for two years, and this is more meant to be for your chip and seal, the things of that nature, so, or roads of that nature.
So if we upgrade a, you know, an old dirt road to this, there would still be?
Let, let's say there was two houses, let, let's say there was five houses that lived along a, a road that they wanted to improve, that, that three of the homeowners collectively wanted to improve, not necessarily a benefit district, and so that they, they get halfway into it and two of the homeowners bought houses at the lake and no longer want to live there. So now you have these properties that are, that the road is tore up halfway through, I mean, I'm just, this is the hypothetical, but this document is, then there, there is a surety company that comes in and measures your road, you know, to that standard, or so, some way, otherwise you really have no mechanism to hold, and I'm going to call it enveloper, but that could be any, any person or entity, a township or whomever, from, you know, failing as they do that, because you are still the owner of it, that way the, the county is not left finishing unfinished projects.
Is there any way to tie it to the property? And the only reason I'm asking is so, like, on the flip side of what our neighborhood revitalization program, it's an incentive to improve properties, and then when they sell that, it transfers to the new owner. I don't know if there's a way when you commit to this, that if I want to go to the lake and sell my house, the commitment is on my, my, my land that would transfer to the new owner, and I, I'm just, just a question.
That's a great question. What this is meant to do is form some sort of contractual entity that can enter into a contract with the county, right? That rather than five collective homeowners, they have to form an LLC
Okay.
that, that develops that, so this, this is meant to keep, it's meant to codify the development agreement. So that, that they'll have to have, yeah, you know, basically that, that they will have to codify their arrangement before they make an agreement with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And that, that happens a lot. So that's, it's a development agreement with. So, and, and this is an, an example of one, could be amended for, for whatever purposes.
What page are you on?
So I'm on page 22.
Okay.
About the project agreement.
I like the timeframe you put in here, like, some days are one year, some days are two years, but it says, you know, you're going to do what you're going to do.
And my understanding is a lot of chip and seal, you know, so a lot of this revolves around maintenance for chip and seal as well, and, and what they do, Joe, is they, they put money into escrow for even additional layers of chip and seal. You know, again, that, that the county can put on at their, at a later date. And one of those example resolutions was, okay, so what, how much should we put in escrow, you know, so many feet of road, you put so much money in escrow? And then that, that gives money for the county then in two years to put another, because chip and seal, you kind of build up over time. Anyway, that, that's part of the, one of the nuances of this is setting money aside.
So I guess my thought goes to say there's quite a few houses on the road and they decide they want a chip and seal, and they enter into an agreement, that would maybe, what would a typical agreement be, five years?
Two years.
Two years, okay, that would get it established, and then.
Two years after acceptance, after, so as, as part of the engineer's duty during construction, he has to give you a letter of final acceptance, it says this road was built, it was built to the standards you set forth, you know, and it's dated, so from that date forward, that starts your two-year bond, and that is the road completed and you drive on it for two years. If after two years it has fallen apart, you know, gosh, nobody used flash like your engineer said to. So that that bond then says, and a bond, if you're familiar in the contracting world, there's a surety that backs that up, so after that entity has been dissolved after two years, the, the bond is held by a surety, and okay, our road is now not serviceable, we can't get a fire truck back there. Then it's a legal document that there's certain money that bonding company will give you based on the failure of, of that road.
I, I guess, I'm wondering if there's maybe two different things that could be going on, one would be one to improve a road or get it up to a certain standard and then the county take over, or is there, when I heard the words like maintenance district, that it would be a long-term thing, that some kind of agreement that would be, we want this brought up, but then they're going to agree to help maintain, is that?
So those are kind of, and, and I'm not really familiar in depth with your township agreements, but those are kind of on a case by case basis, like a section line road, you can't give to a township, you, you have to maintain that. So the, again, that's where a lot of these nuances, maintenance deals, et cetera. This, this document is not meant to address long-term maintenance, really just construction.
Okay, just the improvement.
Just the improvement, and the, the two-year deal, I kind of thought, well, what if, you know, they improved it, but they were nefarious in their operations, they only, they, they sold their 10 lots, they now live in Massachusetts, you know, and now those 10 lots are stuck on a bad road, so I felt two years gave us a horizon to know is that good or bad? Not, not, not meant to be more of a long-term, okay, that the township improved this, we're going to maintain snow, but they're going to pay for chip and seal, you know, et cetera, but I think those may be, I don't want to say, they'll be more nuanced.
Okay, what about if there's township road? It's currently dirt, or, and the township don't want to do any of this part. But on that, the only part we have is there's, there's a bridge. I mean, do we still, I mean, does that just apply just to the bridge only, and then the landowner or the township have to work out whether that's brought up to, you know, for their, if they want to put a, a house on that road, or can you, is there anything that can basically force us to take that road on so they can build?
I would have to defer to a lot of these decisions that were brought before the state attorney general, for very similar questions. A lot of it has to do, yes, there will be five houses on a road that the county did not, you know, it just evolved over time. However, now the right of way is not wide enough to meet your modern design standard, or, you know, what, so yes, there's a lot of these.
I guess my scenario is that maybe there's no houses on this road and they want to build way back in, and the township says, no way, we don't want any part of it.
You, traditionally, your mechanism would be a planning and zoning department to not issue a building permit on, on an unapproved road. So that is the, that is one of the places that you really, in that scenario, it's difficult to, to say, because there, there are no adopted policies, procedures, other than maybe it says somewhere on, I don't, you know,
I think it might be in our best interest, like, if we, we adopt these for us, to then have a sit down with the townships to explain, explain the need, and then get a contract that, with them, that they will abide by the same things in writing, so that, because, like, for me, I have an area with a possible subdivision and county road, township road, right? So you're going to want everybody at the table having the same discussion in the best interest of the constituent that wants to develop. You want everybody on that page, but if we can get there, then I think it's easier for us to explain to the townships why we need to be here and why it's in their best interest to, to join along.
But then that would be, actually the vehicle then to get there wouldn't be a contract with us, as they would adopt these standards.
That's what I, I mean, I think that would be a positive.
Yes. Which, what's your, and, and sometimes, you know, again, your, your case in particular, let's say rather than one house, it was five houses that wanted to improve, but, you know, just to, just we conceptually, because when you do it for one person, you, that, that has bad optics, but, but a collective of five. And, you know, they, they want to improve the road, but yes, the, the bridge or the culvert is outside of their capabilities. And again, it's in the county's interest to bring the whole system up to par, so that, that there will be cases where you partner with them, and Joe, you know, says, great, we'll put in the culvert pipe, and I think that's kind of common practice to some extent, or, or, you know, we've got some, we got, we, we have some funding for a box culvert, so we can get you a box culvert, but the, the, the road leading into it, you know, from, from there to your property is your responsibility, or something of that.
I guess I'm envisioning the, the most problematic areas is going to be bridges, and maybe we get into that when we get into emergency, because you got to, that's, they're so cost prohibitive to, to put in a bridge, and I could see somebody spending money to grade and rock a road, but if there's a $500, $600, $700,000 bridge there, you know, they're going to say, why should we do it? Here's a situation in Eric's District, there was a low water crossing. There was no houses on the other side of the low water crossing, and then they built houses on the other side of the low water crossing. Now, they would like to have a bridge because when it rains, we can't get emergency vehicles and stuff through there to get to their house, so, you know, and a bridge is going to be $200,000 to $300,000 easy to, to fix that.
So, so the, and then I, I followed up with a question, how were those addresses issued? And, and we, we need to stop that, because everything else is post facto, and that, that's case by case, so somehow there needs to be a some way to keep properties from being developed where they are inaccessible, but these are not meant to address that in the least. These are more meant to address, you know, when it is, but.
Best of next check.
I, I, yeah.
Because moving forward, these are just questions, it's on a township road, it's on a county road.
Yeah.
And this is something GIS deals with, the appraiser's office, everybody deals with this, you know, so.
I, I think, and I, I don't want to speak out of term, but one of the, you know, they, they are developing at risk, and the county does not have an obligation to develop infrastructure that was not previously there. Now, if you have a bridge that was there that's deteriorated, you do, however, if, and again, I want to speak to, you know, the nuances of, of the decisions, but it would just seem intuitive to me that the, the county did not issue, well, the, the place may be where they issued, who issues an address, how does it get issued, because that's what that's what tells a homeowner, or, or, you know, the, the case could be made that that's what says you can legitimately occupy that, that space, and, and we will service you.
The tough part of that is you end up with one person at the hub of that, and no matter who's in that seat, that's a hot seat, you have to somebody know. And so there's been several things where you brought up, and I wonder, you know, we don't have, what if we had a planning commission, or whatever you want to call it, that actually had a mix of people out of there, could look over this and kind of, I would admit, to me, it's a personal safety where they're not the only person saying no, but they can actually look at problems and help, help solve those issues.
I, I have a lot of respect for planning commissions, however, they, without authority, they really are just a recommendation body, and, and they're, in my research of what you guys have on your website, whatnot, there's just not much authority to tell people no, like, that, that, whereas others have adopted regulations that give them that authority, I, I'm not so sure that you have that authority, and that's, that's where I kind of, you know, just in your, in your, and how it comes to be, whether it's townships or whomever, how do these?
Okay, so since we're not zoned, or does a resolution give us the authority to actually deny?
I can't speak to that.
I'd be a packed question. Okay, I'd be a packed question.
So in my mind, right, of, of the starting of issuing addresses and the application. We could have some type of addendum with it of, okay, Casey has this piece of land on the other side of a low water crossing that she wants to build on. And she's assuming the risk, like, I've been told. Emergency personnel may not be able to get to me during a flood. I, you know, I'm not getting a bridge. If, if I choose, because it's your choice, right? And most people don't want their, their county zone because they want a choice on their own land. Well, if you choose to build, where, you know, your tax dollars aren't going to work for you because we can't get to you. Like something in writing, right? Where every, the parties agree that I assume the risk. If I go out here and build a, without permission, you know, it's on me versus. Us feeling like, oh gosh, how are we going to get to them? We got to help them, you know, all the things. I don't know. And it needs to start at the beginning, like you're saying, before issuing the, the address. But all of this is, this is great discussion because it's learning of putting things in place we've never had before. So that we can educate people to help them, to be in their best interests of like, hey, have you thought about this? Cause I know you want to put your house here. If you put it over here, you know, this road is accessible, all the things, just like a tool.
I think it would almost need to have something that was, um, on the title. So if they sold that house, the next person would know.
Yeah, you have to disclose that.
Because if they buy it innocently and two years done, oh, they can't get here. Well, I didn't know that. Now I want a bridge. I, I, the ultimate goal is to get consistency with all this and. I used to use the word, no, it's more like, how can we get this, make this work if it can work, you know? And, uh, maybe, maybe giving the county commission the ultimate sign off on all addresses.
Yeah.
The meeting week.
Well, we have the one now that's on the maintenance road that. I'm guessing some of it's been improved. I don't know. I haven't been there to look at it. Uh, and there was an address, maybe one's right now. Well, until we.
Yeah.
Decide all this, it's kind of hard for us like that, you know, you know.
I like that idea.
Initially, we could do it that way and then down the road or some way to form some kind of a body because. We're going to see an increase, I think, over the next few years of building and things. And so, I mean, it's, it's kind of going in that direction. So we need to, we'd have a process. Because we don't need to build any permits in the county, just the city does, right?
Yeah.
So let's see, situation seems to be, okay, the, the road is deeded to the county, but the county has not maintained the road. So, uh, this is a whole bunch of, you know, similar opinions and I'm unprepared, but let me just kind of see what that.
You're fine. I didn't really read through that document. It's all two thousand eight and I'm like, oh, you guys will bring me up to speed on.
Yeah, I, I got there too late to, to say. I read the other one, she couldn't find it. I'm doing now.
Well, we're not going to sit here as we, but, uh, those are, you know, case by case, um. Again, this isn't meant to bring all of that to codify that. This is more your people that are coming and saying. We want to build something and we want the county to accept it when we're done. Um, what should we do?
Yeah, we got, we got a rabbit hole there, sorry.
Well, I think, I think honestly, what we're wanting is we start with this part. And as we have these meetings, Gabe understands more of what else we would like to tie into, to either. Uh, something through the appraiser's office, um, and through GIS and together to where we. When we get done, there may be three different sections of what we're doing, but we've got everything we want. Or, or what we would like to have, if I'm making sense. So that lets him with our questions understand. And then we'll let him finish this. And when, when we get through that, then we have more time to discuss. The others, because it all interacts and intertwines.
So the, the next thing we'll kind of jump to are the pictures. Um, one of the, one of the big things that comes up is right-of-way. Hey, what kind of right-of-way do we need to dedicate? What kind of right-of-way do we have? Um, the, the current state statute requires that, uh, your section line roads, county roads all have sixty feet of right-of-way. The one caveat, and I'll get to that later, our residential streets can be fifty feet. Uh, so we kind of start out, the, the first thing we have is a minimum maintenance road. We don't have that one shown, but that's essentially. Whatever your existing right-of-way is, let's say you do want to build that, you know, you, uh. You don't want to bring it up to maintenance standards, but somehow you want the county to take it over. So you have to dedicate sixty feet of right-of-way. That's your, you know, either your minimum maintenance is as is, um, there's some, some. You know, depending on when it was open, you know, what that right-of-way is, or if you're looking like, okay, great, we want to develop back there eventually. We just need for planning purposes, what do we need to dedicate to? So sixty feet is your new minimum maintenance road. Uh, I didn't necessarily spell that out. I am, uh, but that was one of Rogers', uh, he says, hey, I get this question a lot. What is our minimum maintenance road standard? Well, by definition, minimum maintenance has no standard, you know. But, uh, I think more of his question is what do we tell people to, to allow for that, you know, should it begin to develop? So this is that, it goes from minimum maintenance to what we call a low-volume road. This is four hundred vehicles a day or less. These are going to be a lot of your, uh, county roads that, that, you know, exact scenarios, just a few people live at the end of. We want to bring it up to some sort of standard. It doesn't need to be a twenty-four foot wide. A lot of times we call these three-wheel paths. Um, where you kind of have, you know, the three wheels for the son of.
Been on those.
Yep. So by state statute, those are eighteen feet wide. Um, and that, that is a lot of your county roads. And again, they've developed a whole standard for under four hundred vehicles a day. If you think about that, that's actually a lot of vehicles. Pretty much, pretty much everything. So we, we jump up then to, right, right now on your website, um, you have, they're categorized as local roads and collector roads. So that's where the, the term local comes from. And then you have unpaved and paved local roads. Uh, and we've put in the, in the document that whether or not it's paved is at the discretion of the road and bridge department. So that could get to be a little bit contentious, like, well, when do we go from a paved to an unpaved? And, and maybe that's open for discussion. Uh, but there's so many external factors, um, and a lot of it may have to do with, let's just require a traffic study and if the traffic study says. You know, we need it or, or whatnot. So, but that, that is like, well, what, what, what dictate the pay versus an unpaid? Uh, at this time, it, it's at the discretion of the road and bridge.
So where's chip and seal fall with paved or unpaved?
So that, that would be your paved. So that's, uh, we, we have another one that is your major collector. That's your asphalt road.
Okay, so that's why I was wondering, is it a markage or not?
Yep. Um, so, or pardon me, the, yes, the, the paved then is your asphalt. That's your, your asphalt, two inches of asphalt over a gravel road. So let's say someone comes in, we have an existing gravel road. We would like to put asphalt on it. What do we need to do? Well, first your ditches need to look like this, just that way as the water comes off, it drains properly. And then we need this many feet of width. Uh, and a lot of that is dictated by, once you pave it, people are going to go faster. So you have to have, you know, some more, um. Up to, up to par safety standards, you know, so things of that nature. Um.
So the low-volume road is classified under four hundred vehicles per day.
It is.
But the others don't go by the classification of traffic count. It's up to the discretion of, okay, perfect. Thank you.
So whether it is a local versus a collector, now a collector, that's where we jump up to subgrade preparation, asphalt base. And then those are your major roads. Um, so that's more of your Ottawa, um. So very unlikely a developer is going to, or a township is going to, uh, but that is your, that's your, um, just one step under a state highway.
Uh, of course, townships is only really applies to a couple of categories, um, most of the time.
I think a, a lot of those, you're going to be looking at low volume through local and possibly a paved local if you're, you know. It's a, you're going through a town per se. Um, now, none of these have curb and gutter.
So our, if, if we pass this as a standard, are, are current roads grandfathered in? So if, if they're not up to that standard, that we don't have to immediately go in there and widen our mouth to. You know, because, you know, that could create our own nightmare because we, there's no way we could.
Oh, yeah. When we do, do upgrade, then we want.
What we're doing with Ottawa.
Yes, we want to get up to the standard, but we couldn't do that within five years.
No, no.
You know, I, I don't want to create a, a storm that. Now, what it will be though, I think, maybe I'm wrong, um, if we go with the new standard, as we improve roads. Our cost is going to be higher than maybe it would have been. Less roads a year, that's doing better.
Yeah.
These standards only apply to developers, um, if, if someone is developing a road. Again, the county, uh. You're going to make your own decisions of, of your own roads, but these are for, uh, like, essentially you, you own a road system, others want to do something to it. Here's what others need to do. If you're going to do it yourself, um, but essentially, you know, you, you own a shopping mall development. And one of your tenants says, we want to pave our entrance. And you say, great, here's what it looks like. And cool, um, they pave it. And maybe they say, hey, we're, we're going to pave our parking lot, but if you could just upgrade. The curb inlet at that far end, um, so that there'll be cases where you do do like, hey, it's for the greater good. We are going to inherit a better road. Uh, so I, I use that analogy, um, just to differentiate between. You know, if you were doing your own work versus, um, if your tenant is doing work.
So I don't want an answer on this today, but I'll give you one of the odd responses to me that I'm aware of. So the underground storage, uh, with smart warehousing.
Sure.
On Raven Hill, do you write that?
I do not.
Okay, so by Walmart, you turn and go backwards, River, that's Raven Hill Drive. Here's also Bartley Green elevator down there. There is a tremendous amount of semis in and out of there all day long, okay? To the warehousing place and to the elevator. Part of that road is city, part of that road is county. And a lot of that road needs curb because just the water runoff, a lot of people live along there and it's, it's a mess. And it's too narrow for all the semis. So here's a case where we have city and county and it's already paved, but. We've got entities down there that should then contribute to some of this, so it's a little complicated. So that's going to be one of those challenges, I think, going forward. There's no way around that.
So, so the county, county takes care of that main stretch of that road right down there after six.
After six, yeah.
Everything on the east side of the road off the right-of-way is city.
Yeah.
It's everything on the west side is county. So we maintain it, but like he said, is that something? I mean, when we get into.
So, yeah, that's what this might be helpful. I think it will go to, it said that we need to do something here.
It is difficult to compel, uh, private industry to fund. Uh, the roadway improvements. You can compel them should they want to improve their entrance, like that is, because that's in your right-of-way. So you, you, you do have that, that authority should they want to, but you, you, very difficult to compel them to upgrade it. There are public-private partnerships where should they come to you and say, uh, we do want to put in, uh, road. You know, maybe we've, you know, thirty percent of the cost or whatever that agreement is, so that, but. I say that, that the word I, I would use is compel, very difficult to compel them to participate in public improvement projects.
Turn, be a turn lane down there, it would be happy, I think, so it would help.
Now, should they want to come to you and say, we want to upgrade our entrance? And Joe says, great, that sucker's needed a turn lane for years. Uh, we are going to, uh, exercise our. Uh, option to require a traffic study. That traffic study is going to show turning movements and are going to show that, you know, it needs that. So just for that business to upgrade, um, you know, that, that, that's where you can, you know, start to address those problems. So it does give you mechanisms to address them, um, within your right-of-way. Should they come to you and, and want to upgrade it, you now have mechanisms to do that safely. Great, let, let's look at how to do this safely. Um, but not necessarily compel them to do anything past, uh. Their entrance. And I, I say that's a, that there, there's, we didn't necessarily get to it, we kind of got sidetracked. Um, there's a set of standards in here for entrances as well. Those can be contentious. Uh, if someone wants to put an entrance where it's convenient for them, but it's, it's at the wrong place in a hill or a curve or, or whatnot. Um, so the, the next standards, so let's just go to sheet three, and these are your subdivision roads. Uh, more where someone's taking, uh, fifty acres and wanting to subdivide it. Uh, the cutoff in, uh, in what I would call two different types of roads. So, and what, what this is meant to do is accommodate two different types of right-of-way. Again, state statute says county roads have to have sixty feet of right-of-way. Unless they are for residential purposes. And someone asked the state attorney general for a, an opinion, what dictates residential purposes? And the opinion came down that if it has curb and gutter, that's what differentiates a residential road from other county roads that need to have sixty feet of right-of-way. Uh, and it came into play where, where they were inheriting subdivisions like, well, this subdivision does not have fifty feet of right-of-way. Uh, so that the extra right-of-way is meant to handle drainage. So curb and gutter, uh, that's where you get shorter, shorter right-of-way. Is you're now designing for that water to go elsewhere, so.
Can I ask a question to clarify everything you just said? So there's not curb and gutter. It's considered a county road, not a subdivision road?
Just by the nuances of the decision. Uh, so the, the statute said that, uh. When opening a, a county road, and I can't say it verbatim, uh, it needs to be sixty feet, that's our modern. Um, uh, let's say it was Sedgwick County that came and said, we have a developer that has an existing subdivision. Uh, and we're wanting to, or he's, you know, he's wanting to deed it over, however, the right-of-way is only fifty feet, but it has curb and gutter. So the, the state attorney general came back and said, we view curb and gutter as the differentiation between, like, and again, I don't want to speak for. For legalese, but that, that would seem pretty straightforward.
Yeah, no. Yeah, that is.
Basically, if we're, if there's a subdivision being done and there's no curb and gutter, their road through there has to be sixty feet.
It does.
If they have curb and gutter, then the right-of-way and everything will be fifty.
Yep, and, and you, and that's typically going to be at the developer's discretion, whether they want to go. Uh, whether they want to save, like, hey, boy, I can get four more lots if I just cut this down to fifty. Um, versus, so we, we put another caveat in here that if the density is more than three acres per lot, you have to have curb and gutter. Cause that is essentially, that's a residential street. Um. So that, that is, you know, that, that is the one place it is required is if your, your acreage is under three. Uh, but anything over that, it's at the developer's option, whether they want to dedicate fifty feet of right-of-way or sixty feet of right-of-way. Uh, and then the next, the next sec, two sections have to do with, uh, roundabouts. And these get to be a big deal, uh, typically for county developments, because you're only going to have, like, it's not a through street, you know, uh, those are. Uh, called, where you just, where you have a turnaround, a bulb at the end, um, like, let, let's say you have, you know, a numbered route, but somebody wants to develop. Hey, my, my dad left me a hundred acres and I want to develop this into twenty-acre lots. So when I have one entrance. And then I want to have all my five lots feed off of that.
Okay.
Uh, so this gives you the radiuses and whatnot for, uh, the design emergency vehicles that are in place today.
See, like it's September hills, it's one road up, but then that little bitty.
Yes, a little.
Yeah, I mean, you cannot hardly plow snow. Around that, and I know that's a, uh, a little bit different, but you can't hardly plow snow. You can't get a big truck around it. You can't. A fire truck, I don't would, I think that'd be awfully hard.
Um, no, so that's, uh, that's what those subdivision cul-de-sacs, if you're like, well, cul-de-sac, we're not in a densely urban area. Uh, that it actually comes up quite a bit when people want to take, you know, a hundred acre or so and, and like, let's make it into twenties. And that way all my grandkids can be right here, Rex to me and.
Common driveway.
Common driveway, but you know, what, what they end up doing is plowing themselves, you know, kind of an entrance. And then at the end of the entrance, there's no turnaround. There's no, like Joe said, like, a lot of this is also designed. Uh, for snow vehicles. That way they come in the plow snow, they don't have to, you know, reverse or whatnot. Um. So, yeah, it's, it accommodates, makes sense, school bus, snow route, whatever, this makes sense, yeah. So th- this is for your, and, and, and I think this is a lot of, as, as a real estate agent, I, I think you're probably seeing this as well. Or, you know, you're not selling five hundred acres at a time, you're selling probably twenty and fifty and, and some common entrances and maintenance agreements and. Um, so then page six are those entrance design standards. Uh, and a lot of it has to do with stopping sites. That's where we gave the little graphic of the car, uh, just to kind of make, uh. That developer aware that, you know, the county is cognizant that this is, you know, this is what these standards are meant to address. Also gives you some standards for not locating entrances too close to each other and, and things of that nature. So. Um, again, you know, county road, it was a field entrance and now we want to put, uh, a collective of houses. So that kind of gives some, okay, you have to be so far off the intersection, you know, some other things like that.
And then it also, when you, at the beginning, that would be upon the developer, their responsibility to do all that, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, you brought a good point. So what about a field entrance? I would grandfather some, I mean, what's, I was in a new field entrance. Quite of these standards or is that a different set? Because obviously not used as much.
Um, no, field entrance, well, field entrances, uh. They, they used to act like nineteen seventeen or something like that. If you had a field entrance at nineteen seventeen, then you'd go.
Yes, so the original, the original Plaster, each farm, that I don't remember right off the top of my head. They each had one entrance per property.
Yeah.
Anything after that is an additional entrance. You know, I go out honestly and I looked at one the other day, they wanted to extend it. It's been there for, I don't know how many years. Is it necessarily a safe place? No. But how do we, they've got their. But how do we, they've got their fence built and everything to that, but I would think. That a lot of it would be moving forward with new entrances, I don't know how, and maybe Gabe, that's kind of what you're asking.
Yeah.
How do we do that?
I the, so that the the answer to your question is no, this does not address at field entrances. Those are uh by permit through Joe's department, these are entrances that connect to streets, so.
Gear, I get that, so.
Yep, uh, but uh, the these are meant to address, uh, you know, a field entrance just goes to the right way and then nothing. These are meant to address streets or roads uh that are. Formerly opened via county law.
So as we do this, you know, we'll probably want to try to get those entrances, something figured out when we get into our policy.
Can you differentiate field entrances with gravel? I mean, field entrances typically are field, like you drive into the field across the pipe versus when you put stone down. You're doing something, I'm just asking, because I I don't know, yeah, which.
So I I would say this is, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're fine, I'm just, my brain's like going, like, how could we?
So, um, in year twenty twenty four, Joe permits a field entrance. That's great, it's constructed, you know, as a field entrance, gravel entrance, et cetera. Um, you know, he kind of went out and did his uh uh due diligence and, you know, stopping site distance is okay, et cetera. Uh, then in year uh twenty thirty, that land gets divided and that entrance wants to, yeah, they they want to upgrade it. So this now says how wide that entrance has to be, like, okay, great, but your pipe now has to be longer, uh, your radiuses have to be wider. Uh, weight you're putting in a commercial grain elevator, hold on, now stopping site distances are not okay. Because your vehicle traffic is not, it is not that car that we showed, and and per the standards we adopted, you know. That now triggers.
Change of classification throws it into a new, new category, and you may have to start over.
Exactly, so.
People assume that once there's ever.
Yeah.
A cow path there.
Yeah.
This now, we can upgrade it, and matter of fact, I think there was even an application for it and anticipating of getting.
Yes, so that this this gives you that.
More permanent driveway.
By resolution, uh, it puts, it puts the onus onto that developer's engineer. To prove to Joe's department that that entrance is safe. Uh, so they'll go hire someone like myself or or um another consultant to to do the due diligence of. Uh, drawing it up, doing the curves, like, oh, wait, this does not, you know, so so they actually have to deliver the bad news to their clients.
So. We'll go through this, we've talked about it, we've got more time, decide. Everybody let you know what you, what we think of that, then I'm going to get notes from everybody and I will talk to you. About all these other things, how we can incorporate that into our road policy or whatever down the road. So we'll we'll start here, but then we have all these other questions we want answered, this is going to take a little bit of time to get. So we can, we can get those answers and have them to where when when the phone rings, we can answer most all of the questions. Does does everybody feel like?
No, yeah. Right, this is great, what I'd like to see is. Not just with this policy, but maybe we would kind of set this on a shelf for a little bit while we get the other ones worked out and, you know, one big meeting with the townships to say. Here's what we're looking at, and if you guys could use the same policies, great, if you don't find that, that'd be consistent throughout the county. Because like Casey said, sometimes you have a county road here and a township road here, and they're both impacted.
Yeah.
So how do we attack that?
I, I mean, as political entities, you have to work together.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I feel like once we, I mean, we do what we need to do and lead by example and then just have that discussion and explain to them. We took this because we found, you know, X, Y, and Z examples, we didn't have answers for people, yeah. Yeah, and then say, we would encourage you guys to take a look at it, and we can always update this. It's just like, this is what, you know, and I, I mean, it's just good discussion.
But them adopting the same standards wouldn't change ours, so I mean, they would be free, they could adopt the same standards down the line.
Um, this was meant to address the problem twofold, kind of like I said, one is. Uh, people who are voluntarily coming to you and saying, we want some guidance, so this is meant to address. Active investors looking to upgrade in some way, shape, or form, but the other is the 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 penal part of it. The 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 codes administration, the part that everyone does not want, you know, the the the, you know, that that is, that is the. Like you said, I I'd like to know what I want, where I want, et cetera, so this is more uh for, you know, bringing things up to standards. People, you know, coming to you saying, we we would like to do something, what what would Atchison County like to see? And for a township, they may say like, hey, we really like this, however, we cannot get twenty-four feet, you know, just as as the road next down. Um, you know, so those are, you know, again, case by case, uh, but more meant to give some guidance, like. And again, as a, if a township doesn't have standards and someone comes to them, now at least they have something to fall back on. I I like that thought as well.
Adopting a set of codes and getting the our plan. Will that help us, like, we apply for assistance and grants and things that, I mean, does that look favorable by like KDOT or the?
No, I I I was gonna say, I, as you went on to that, you, once you, once you brought it back to Department of Transportation. I can really only speak intelligently uh about roads, infrastructure, et cetera. You know, as you get into private development, you know, if you're, if you're zoned, then yes, perhaps you're going to get some development grants federally. But I'm just not all that aware of those, however, with KDOT, they're more concerned within your right of way, safety. Things of that nature, so I I don't think.
I guess where I was going with that is that if you are developing and keeping those entrances safe. Onto those county roads and and having that, I thought it would maybe look favorable on. It's like, okay, you guys are taking care of this, you know, this portion of it, so that's that's where I was.
Well, I think possibly, like, if we adopt this and then we go into, we're going to. Apply for money to redo a road and we have a standard, you know, like right now, we don't have it. Ottawa Road, we're doing it as per LRSP, Local Road Safety Plan. Their local road safety plan is basically telling us our roads aren't where they need to be. So possibly it could help, but I don't think that it directly would be.
Right, it says, hey, you guys are good actors, you're trying to do the right.
Yeah, right, and I think, I think when I started this with with KDOT, I know I'm into weeds. The big thing was, we don't do anything to take care of our roads, why would we want to pay you when you have not been responsible? In maintaining your roads, and as we do these things, we're not just showing them, we're showing the county. That we are trying to do things to be more responsible for our road system, and I think that's probably the most important part of this.
Yeah, I I I, you know, the the these are, you know. These are more viewed as something to aid in in development, aid in development of rooftops and and. Not necessarily, whereas building and codes can, they can have a bad connotation as a, we we have a lot of clients, you know. We're, you know, we're going on to the county's website, we're getting their standards, it really helps us then to to lay out their their development and. Uh, so I've kind of taken, you know, the the ones that I I liked, I thought kind of applied more to your more rural. Uh, developments that you're going to be experiencing in the next ten to fifty years.
So one of the challenges you've had, and I was the city, now I'm here, and I I was on planning commission for several years, so. Extranet territorial jurisdiction, so there's a, if a development's going to be inside that three miles. Now, how do we, I guess, what's the best way to connect with the city to say? Hey, when you guys are getting an application to seven inside of three miles, here's the standards inserted into this development. So that it's consistent, because ultimately the county's been possibly taking the roads, so there needs to be a, to be a process.
And it needs to happen soon.
Yeah, early in the process, because that's where some mistakes have been made in the past.
So, uh, that that that's, I guess, yeah, I'm I'm thinking I want to answer that.
It's also the most likely area to have developed.
I said, it's it's called a growth area, is it, you guys, the absolute growth area? Um, as our planning commission, we had growth areas as well, so the the county's uh. Rules and regulations take precedent, that first, and then then the growth area applies over that. So the first thing they have to do is meet your road standard, and the assumption is that the city road standard eve is even more stringent than your road standard is. Uh, and then that is the case, you know, that they're probably going to require a curb and gutter, you know, et cetera. So the the assumption is that that, you know, that that's, you know, then the city inspector takes over, county doesn't have much involvement. Um, but that is a little bit of enforcement mechanism, who with the county goes around and makes sure that. As a well-intended landowner is regrading the county road. That they're told, you know, I I don't know if that happens occasionally, um, you know, kind of some freelance development.
Something in here, but the inspector that the developer pays for.
But that, so that that is, that's, again, that's a well-intentioned developer, but what about an ill-intentioned? So that, yeah.
Well, and going back to your comment earlier of issuing addresses and making sure your ducks are in your own, you have the road standards, like. The plat has how many addresses are going to be on there, so it's almost like the process is backwards, you want to know that on the front end. So that you know what you criteria you fall under, so that you can develop it with your engineer or architect, like, according to. The rules, so it almost needs to start here.
Yes.
Um, and maybe not an individual address permit, but a subdivision permit, so that we see it first and we can be that helper. To sit at the table and say, you know, what questions you have, because you have questions, now we have answers, let's get this going together and.
That is my.
You want to do a subdivision?
Yeah.
How, how do Platts get approved? Like, is, how do, I mean, they get filed, but who approves the plat?
Within three miles, the city does. Okay, the outside of that three, maybe.
They just replat it, file it with the county.
So we've only had it happen once, and the city had already approved it, and then the landowner brought us the the city approval form. And it was a two-acre plat, and then we voted like to approve it and signed off on it. That's how we did it. Now, with that being said, we signed that we were in favor of the two acres being developed. But then we explained, you have to now talk to road and bridge on entrance areas. So like, again, the process is way backwards and after like, looking at this example, it needs to start with.
Plating.
Getting it all right and helping.
Yeah.
And then the final would be, okay, I've I've done all of it now, sign off is is kind of the final piece.
Yeah, another example, Paradise Lake, you know, whenever that was developed years ago. It's a lake out west here and there's a bunch of houses around it, I don't know what they did, but, you know, I think someone just built a road.
Well, it was, it was a township road, uh, it was private, they have their own.
Uh, private road around the lot.
Yeah, everything is private.
Okay.
Maintenance and all of it.
And then this is what I was told, I don't know if this is right or not, and then the road became enough that the. The county took over the actual road going by, not the road around the lake, but the road accessing the lake.
Okay.
The county took that road over because of the traffic.
Those POAs had a made chip and seal it, that's when it.
But I think, I mean, originally they did, and I wonder, this this would be a process that.
Yeah, and I think, I think what Alan's asking, if I'm correct, and we're all saying the same thing. We need to have our rules, but we still need to be able to get along with the city and make it all work between the two. To where they understand, because Casey's correct, and we've said this from the beginning, that whole thing was done almost backwards. It should have started here and then went to that point, so that when it gets to the end, all we have to do is. Issue the the addresses and we're done, instead of everything being totally backwards.
Yeah, and we don't want to be looked at as a roadblock either, like, development in Atchison County is awesome, like, we want to be a partner in the process. We just need to set the tone for the process.
The one that's kind of the one that's been plotted, but hasn't been submitted to us to accept down south. She told me that, she said, well, there were no standards, so basically they done whatever they want. And and I said, but, to me, I mean, it was a little bit overkill, because I said. You know that just for sta- just knowing that there's safety standards there that you need to admit to uh uh should abide by. I said, you ignored all of that, you you just, there are none, so I'm not even consider anything. And I I I just thought, you know, even even if there's something, the bare standards there, it would help us out.
E- even if I was, you know, the consultant for that individual doing the plat that was getting addressed to at to the city of Atchison. I I would love the convenience to be able to go on the county's website and say, what does, what do they expect my entrance layout to be?
This would be very helpful for someone.
It was put together, you know, with, like, only that I I, you know. Um, for someone searching for that information, this document is meant to give that information, not so much meant to. Codify messy existing arrangements, uh, so you know, it's not a retroactive, it is a going forward document, but, yeah.
Do it right the first time.
Um, to to, yeah, just just to start, you know, take that first step forward and and, you know.
So are these standards and specs pretty, pretty standard across?
They are. I'd say I I I kind of took my favorites from uh Celine County, Miami County, Dickerson County.
Pretty common, the driver's going to say, yeah, it's the same thing, yeah, right?
Yep, um.
I realize that some parts of the state or area in country, there's going to be differences and issues with all that, but.
The the last part of the page, uh, we reference, and we just put it into the documents, a lot of the compaction requirements. KDOT, so just to, you know, it.
That's interesting.
Kind of been a a layman can, you know, doesn't have to research them, but knows how to how to build the road.
I have one quick question on that grams. Let's go in here, so, just trying to follow this, and so what I noticed is like, on this side, you show a ditch and this side you do not. And then just to show the options depending on your terrain.
Yeah, this this splits a section line, one of them's called a cut section, and one of them's a fill, so if you're filling, you're actually raising the land up, so it doesn't have a ditch, it sheet flows off.
Okay.
Um, but if you're cutting, that's where you ditch is.
Okay, I get you.
And then there's also a different type of compaction, whether you're building a road or cutting a road.
I noticed that, yeah, okay.
So where do we, where do we go from right here?
So I need to incorporate uh some of the notes I've made today and just uh give the group some time to, you know, hey, I actually, I. I was a little concerned about this, you know, maybe we iron it out, I'd say we're probably ninety-nine percent there. But, yep, again, in in doing some research, I found some really good pre-existing resolutions. So I I can forward those to the county counselor just for reference, you know, by no means can write them, however, um. I did see some like, okay, great, that's, that that's how they codified, that's how they brought the the this wild, you know, west under control. Uh, of like stormwater, like that, that was one of the main concerns was, um, a lot of people do not like to take stormwater into account, like, well, just. Water on my neighbor, that, um, so anyway.
They were suggested that, then we'll go on to the next phase or uh do do that, so. Nothing that would be developed under there would really change any of these standards, but it. It was, so we could, we could accept this and get that down. And then always add to it, that that it should complement it, not.
Yeah, the the next is going to be policies and procedures for plating, uh, for, you know, look at address, you know, more. If your next step is going to be more systemic with internally, like, okay, internally, how do we want to funnel things towards this? Again, right now, it's it's um more someone coming to the county saying, we want guidance. Uh, but then the next step is, how do we funnel people towards that, um, again, compel them to go that direction?
And get the word out.
Yeah.
So then, so then, uh, we usually in the spring have a township meeting. So, and I'm not, I know you got a lot to do just for us, but uh, should we put that off until we get figured out? Or we were thinking the middle of the tenth of March, it's kind of somewhere around there is where we were thinking about having their.
Your timing is good.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as we are to the point where, I just want to make sure that we're where we want to be by the time we go talk to them. And the reason why I moved it up is because I know we have a lot of of uh.
Mark.
I'm not going to say issues, but sometimes we don't get all of our data sent to us that we have to have for our report. And if we wait till April like we did last year, the report has to be in by April fifteenth, I believe.
Ah.
So that's why we're trying and we're trying, we have to get that set here pretty quick, trying to get the blue building, it's working on that. So we can have that meeting with the township.
I don't know if it would have to be even approved at that time, this is like, this is our draft right now, and this is what we look like. We're going to be, we plan on passing this, if it's not passed already by that time.
I like your, uh.
Is it the fourth? I'm sorry.
Hesitance in the in the thought of giving the public time to see it, ask questions, this could be misinterpreted as zoning. And could be very ill-received, uh, but I I like the thought of being able to talk about it. And at what what your, what your immediate need was is as people come to us. So now you can give them like, hey, here's our draft, here's the direction we're headed, uh, but I think if it is done without time for comment. Or I I don't want to.
I I'm saying earlier, that's what I'm saying, yeah, I think it's.
I think unless there's an impetus, I I like the thought of having it as a draft copy for your meetings. I think unless there's an impetus, I, I like the thought of having it as a draft copy for your meetings and saying, hey, we're, we're looking to give you guys some guidance. Uh, please have some comment if necessary, um, yeah, anyway, I, uh, just, I, I live in a rural county as well and if. We were saying we were adopting zoning, um, yeah, anyway, if it came across that way, so.
It shouldn't come across that way.
Well, well, that's where I.
I'm like, I think this is great, because we have had constituents asking us questions. And the most frustrating thing as a commissioner is to not be able to help your constituents and then not to give them the answers, and it's like. This is a tool that we as, the three of us need in our wheelhouse, like, we need this and. It's not forced upon anyone, like, this is what we are finding that's helping people, so, I mean.
But I do understand where he's saying it, because it's just like when we try to enforce the entrance thing. You know, it has nothing to do with zoning, and the first thing that comes out of somebody's mouth is, boy, you're not zoned, I can do whatever I want. And I guess this should explain to them, these are our rules or our policies. But I do understand what he's saying, because some people will immediately say, well, you're trying to control what we can do. When they're really miseducated on, on the difference between zoning and us having our own rules and policies.
Well, as, as far as, uh, I, I think the initial question was kind of, you know, timing and next steps. I would love to get the comments back from, uh, anything that's generated from this meeting here, I can incorporate those, you know, within three to four days' time. So I would say within two weeks, and we could comfortably have a draft copy that incorporates the comments, like, we wouldn't want to put this out until. We took into account, I, I noticed some changes, just, you know, some, some wording we want to make clear. Uh, but if anything else comes to mind, and then I'd say in two weeks, we'll have the copy that is ready for comment. Um, and if, if, um, and it really is just at, at your discretion when you would like to. Again, I'll, I'll forward Joe those resolutions and I can't really comment on them, but they seem to be, uh, again, as I was reading, I was like, okay, great, that's how this, um. This, that's how this county did.
I'm forwarding you what Gabe sends, what he sends, I'm forwarding everything to.
So we.
So if we were going to have a meeting March tenth, would we want to send this out beforehand? Without expla- what, wait a minute, before explanation of what's going on, or is it going to look like? There, are they going to say, oh, that's zoning, that, before we have an explanation of why we are doing it?
I think the more information is better, and when we have our so-called almost final draft, that we send it to them and give them a couple of weeks, hey. Read through this so that you're prepared to ask us questions March fourth, and we, we can talk, because for me, like, going through this. I'm thinking of all of the people that have came before us the past three years of, I have this problem and how can you help me fix it? And we don't have fixes, we can't help them, like, we don't have an answer, and this just kind of guides. Some of that, and again, not going retroactive, this is future thinking of, you know, and more than likely. We're, it's just the beginning, we're going to see rural Atchison County become developed in areas as land change, I mean, as you.
When I took this over, it was like, oh, you're going to have a, a few, four or five new homes a year, new addresses, oh my goodness.
So.
Right, that's.
It's, oh my goodness.
So, so. I think as long as that email or, or you send it out, it has a paragraph ahead of that, make it very clear. This doesn't change anything that you're doing now.
Yep.
This is what the county's going to do, and this is for new development, not existing.
Yep.
If you just hit your bullet points, I think.
Yeah, I think. Yeah. Let's rename it design guidelines, um, roadway and street design guidelines, very nuanced.
Guidelines instead of standards.
Guidelines probably better, because you know, as I was, there's going to be some variations along the. Yeah.
I, I think that would.
I don't, it's like, Big Brother's telling.
I, I agree, I, I agree.
More like, hey, we're going to do this and you guys want to adopt the same standards or similar standards, it makes it more consistent.
Yep.
I do think, the one comment I've got, and I could email this too if you want, but I'd love to see some kind of a comment in here saying that there's an effort to. Coordinate anything extraterritorial jurisdiction scope with the city's planning.
Yep.
So hopes to be complimentary to the city and possible future township.
So is it primarily, uh, uh, the city of Atchison that has a growth area, is that the only?
You don't have to define growth area, but that is a growth area within that.
I, I'll, I'll go on their website and kind of link some wording.
And Phil Bart gives the contact down there, we met Phil.
Was it three miles from the, uh, city limits?
Right, and that's right, here's the thing, it's three mile right now from the city limits, yeah, but. The legislature, every year there's a bill to change it, to get rid of it, to make it smaller, whatever, so I think if you just say whatever the definition is, so. And we're becoming a zoned county, it's irrelevant, but as long as we're on its own, that's, it's there.
So I have a question, so, within the three miles, all right, so does that go? Once they have the airport, then it's another three miles from there?
No.
It's still from the main city, so it's not anything around the, the, uh.
No, 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 no.
Okay, I just, I don't know, I mean, I just want to ask.
Yeah, the map I have seen, where I understand it is, uh, you know, Rogers on or not even correct, but wrong, but I believe it's just a. There, there's actually a map that shows that, it actually may be wrong.
Yeah, it has to be from the main, it's not from the hub.
Yeah.
There's about four minutes left, do you guys have anything else?
I'd really like to talk to you guys, if it was just a workshop, just for just a few minutes, but I don't know how we can move that with you here at the workshop.
Is there any other business we have to do formally?
Or do you have anything after this?
Yeah, at eleven thirty, we have an executive session.
Next, how long?
It was two hours.
Two hours.
So, would you have, I mean, could you do a workshop right after that for like, just a little bit, or can we extend the meeting?
Well, so we'll have to come back in for adjournment.
So we could recess to, to a workshop?
Mm-hmm.
And then come back in and, and then.
Final comments.
Then we can keep the tape, get your recorder going with that.
I just have something, there's like ten minutes, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, but afterwards, is that what you're talking about?
Maybe after our executive.
I think we'll have to do it after.
Yeah, no, I just have the time to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so your executive session will be over at the Rock's like one thirty then.
Yeah, unless it's extended, but if it's extended, we can let you know.
I would appreciate that, because it's just, just a little bit, so, but thank you all, thank you, Gabe.
Yeah, thank you very much, this is, this is, yeah, this is really good.
But I plead, I welcome any comment, and the next set will be stamped for review, and then that'll be the, the ones that are kind of ready for others to review.
Awesome, Joe, one thing, you, you talked to Gabe too, you helped me to know. What's our objective this year, we have this plan, we have your bridge plan, maybe we got your current policy review. We have a list of, look at the island, try to get it done, that'll all kind of sync together, maybe just two or three documents, I don't know, just ask.
So you're wanting, okay.
Just know what's our, what's our list of things we're going to work on?
All right, so I've already got the road plan, so, do you want me to say that, do you have again?
No, no, I'm just saying, some of the ones that mechanics have, have a lot of components we don't have. That's why I didn't know.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
What's the, what's the list for the year where we're going to try to accomplish?
Okay, between us.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all right, we will.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Yeah, because there's like the bridge standards for, for.
Yeah, for replacement and stuff like that, yeah.
That way we can have a food plan on what's next.
So all of us through this process.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is, uh, culvers, like everything, yeah, Joe has really good hand on those, but just, you know, standards.
What's, I understand exactly what you're asking, so, no, we will do that, thank you.
That's awesome, congrats, that's exciting, tell him congrats.
Thank you, I'm going to call that input.
I know, right, it was a lot.
I thought maybe he was going to be. The executive session.
No.
Um, her husband is going to lease the Lancaster oil mechanic shop and, and do mechanic. So, that's awesome, they're going to have.
Can't extract, so that's a good thing.
Okay, eleven thirty.
And it's just, uh, us three and HR?
Uh-huh, non-elected, yeah.
I'll move the board of county commissioners, recess to executive session, uh, what time is?
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty, to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of the executive session in two hours, then the commission room courthouse basement, and those present will be, uh, the three. Commissioners, HR, and. And the.
Sheriff of the county.
Sheriff and, uh, county attorney.
Okay. It's been moved, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero, then in the executive session, now the.
At least you're doing right, I refuse to be right Friday, if it's not a game this weekend.
Well, you know, I debated on it and I was like, oh.
No, that's all right, yeah.
I like it.
That's good.
So you know we're actually meeting upstairs. I'm going to use restroom.
Yeah, I'm going to use restroom, I'll be up.
All right, that'll be three of us.
We probably go to the. Charter this.
All right.
Okay, we are back in open session, and we will be extending our current executive session.
Well, I'll have to make a motion.
Yep.
To extend our executive session, same parameters and individuals involved as, uh, previous. Uh, for an hour and a half, and then we will adjourn, uh, with no action taken, and we'll, at the end of the executive session, we're done.
Okay, I will second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes two to zero.